It is 7:01, I'm going to call this Board of Commissioners Special Town Meeting through order. I'm going to start with a roll call. And I will still do the roll call this time, but we will transfer it over to our town administrator for the next meeting. Commissioner Brooks is on his way here, Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Lot is also on her way here, Commissioner Pravat.
Here.
And President Franklin present. We have Chief of Police David Burst.
Here.
Director Public Works Darnell Bond.
Here.
And Town Administrator Clayton Anderson.
Present.
We also have Attorney Karen Ruff on her way and will be joining us shortly. If we can all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united in the world, with liberty and justice for all. We can move on to a review of the business items on the agenda. We have appointments to the Board of Supervisors of Elections, the Police Space Lease Contract. Those are both votes. Then we have Property Standards, Charter Review and Meeting Regulations. Your Board Discussions, and I have left them on a special meeting. I think I just swallowed fuzz. Sorry. One second. Okay. Sorry, I have left them on a special meeting so that we can receive public comment since we've been wanting public comment on those items. Is there any changes through the agenda? Welcome Attorney Ruff. Okay. If all in favor of moving forward with this business agenda signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
We're going to move on to our Consent Agenda. We have those minutes that needed some changes after the last meeting. All in favor of approving this Consent Agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. So the Consent Agenda passes unanimously of all those present and we will get right into town business. So the first order of business up is the Board of Supervisors of Elections nominees. Our Special Assistant Aiden Thomas and I put out requests for anyone interested in Board of Supervisors of Elections during the month of August. Our three previous members of the Commission, or the Board, Danielle Durham, Evelyn Stevens and Jay Summerlot would like to return. We also received one request to join the Board from Romeo Castilio, who is a resident of Marlboro Town. These are my nominees and I will open the floor to questions or comments.
I don't have.
objection.
If the public has any comment on the appointments, if you would please come to the podium or if you are online, please signify you have a comment by raising your hand. When you comment, please make sure that you say your name and where you are from. Street.
Repeat the names again.
Danielle Durham, Evelyn Stevens, Jay Summerlot and Romeo Castillo. Seeing no public comment, I'll ask if there's a motion to approve these four members of the Board of Supervisors of Elections.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Colbert, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. And we will move on. The next order of business, which is the Police Space Contract. I am actually going to turn introduction of this item over to Commissioner Colbert. He's worked very hard over the last many, many months with our town attorney to make this happen and pull this together after we authorized the expenditure and asked him to look into this in May, I guess it was.
Right. So this is the lease agreement, which is the culmination of our discussion and efforts for new space for the Police Department. This lease outlines all, essentially a basic lease agreement with special provisions for its use as a Police Department. Pretty much everything that we had discussed previously in terms of prices being within the allocated cost in our budget for this fiscal year, as well as other entry and access concerns with the landlord, again, ensuring security of police property, but not, is all included in this lease. Hasn't really been any changes since our previous discussions. This is voting to approve a three-year lease with the landlord of this property. Also a part of this, we included memorandum for right of first refusal if any other property spaces within the building come up for lease or purchase of the entire property when that comes up, and also agreement to annexation with those owners as well.
Do any Board members have any questions? All right, we'll open it up for any public comment. If you would like to comment, please come up, state your name and your street and you will have three minutes for your comment.
Jimber Clay, Old Mulberry Pike. So I don't know what I can comment on, but in fact, still, you know, this has not been distributed to the public until we have no knowledge of even how much it is that you are proposing to spend. However, if it should happen to be, you know, more than $25,000 a year, as you said it was for three years, I would like to bring up, this is town ordinance 2002/06, our procurement, and anything over $75,000 must be bid out unless there is a supermajority vote that says that some other, some other method is more advantageous. This is a single source procurement, you know, if it has not been bid out, then there must be a written, written recommendation of the department head and the town administrator under the supervision of the mayor must determine after review of available resources and receipt of that written recommendation that there's only one source reasonably available to require by its service. I would also like to point out that, well, I'd like to question, how many police officers do you even have right now? Because back when we had five police officers, as they don't all work at the same time, we used to work out of that space that's now the President's office. So when the town hall was expanded, the original idea was we were going to have more meeting space because then we got this much more space than all those offices back there that are now going to be open, so, you know, just not even used. So I wonder what you all plan on doing with that, that additional space that, you know, the town spent a million, million and a half, $2 million in expanding the town hall that's now is going to not be used as police space. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Anyone got their hand up online? Can you?
Can you hear me?
Let me turn up the volume, Brian. Try that again.
Hey, can you hear me now?
I can, but I might be the only one because I'm right near the speaker.
I can barely hear.
Okay, I'll run.
This sometimes happens with his computer. We'll give you a minute.
Yep, thank you. System, audio. Here we go. Thank you so much. Give me pause for that. Pick a phone. I'm going to have to come back or else maybe you can relay. I merely wanted to ask if during the lease time, if something more favorable comes up in town. I'm really just voicing my same concern that we're having a Police Department housed outside of town when I thought there was some places that were likely candidates in town and it would be more, you know, advantageous to be close to the people they serve. So I want to just make that remark. It's not really a question. It's like if we do have an opportunity, since we are leasing for something in the near future over the next few years, that we could maybe relook at this. Is this open to relooking at? Thank you.
And I can do that unless you want to. That, so we're going to close, follow the comment on that. Just kind of answer a few questions. One, and I'll, if the attorney has comments to add, just please let me know. Firstly, we have been probably, at least for five years, our department heads, both department heads of Public Works and Public Safety have been looking for additional space because the spaces that they are in are not adequate for their size. Our general government was reaching capacity and I'm sure it will be getting close to that again. So moving our police officers out of the very, very small space actually allows us to expand our Police Department. Right now, as, you know, 10 years ago, really, actually 11 years ago now when I moved here, it was a lot easier to get police officers than it is today. Police officers have their pick of places, they're being offered a lot of nice perks to go different places, and if they go back and they see our Police Department and realize they're working in a sardine can, they're not interested in coming here. So it's important that we be thoughtful with recruiting. Secondly, there are just not a lot of spaces in the area that are adequate to meet the needs of either a Public Works Department or a Police Department. We have discussed all of these topics, add and off, you know, kind of at this point, but also this space, while it is located outside of town, they have signed an annexation agreement, which means they will not continue to be outside of town and the location, what they, okay, so they will sign an annexation agreement before I sign a contract. That's part of the conditions. So they will not continue to be outside of town, but they are, I think it's five minutes, but I think Chief has told me that they actually make it in four minutes without the lights on. So it's, it's not substantially distant from town. The agreement, as far as being able to get out of it, my understanding from speaking with you Commissioner Colbert, is that as we allocate the funds, as long as we allocate the funds, we say if we choose not to allocate the funds next year, then we are out of the lease. As far as how much it costs, it's actually in the budget. So the budget documents allocated money for this space, the total cost is going to wind up being less than what we allocated. When we adopted the budget, we chose the amount of money, we said what we were doing it for, and we all approved it. That was in May. Can I answer all the questions?
And I think, trying to remember if you can correct me if I'm wrong with the ordinance that was cited in terms of procurement. Mostly related to goods and services, it wouldn't necessarily be related to real estate or property procurement. Am I correct in that?
Well, that's my understanding, but I think we will pull the ordinance reference and make sure. But my understanding is all of the requirements have been met.
Yeah.
The department head has taken the appropriate steps, the town has taken the appropriate steps.
Yes.
The, so it is subject to the appropriation of funds on the annual basis. So despite the fact that it's a three-year contract, if things change, then Board doesn't allocate the funds, then town can get out of that lease. Landlord is going to do renovations to property for the benefit of the town and the operations of the police there. They're providing for appropriate parking, for appropriate signage, appropriate safety measures at the location. So all of those things have been addressed. Landlord is not going to have unlimited access to the area like a landlord might always have a key to be able to get in. That's not the case here. Landlord must, if need to access the property for any reason, must go with a police officer. That's really about the main issues as I talked.
Yes. Yeah, I was trying to address that. We've already looked at, while there is other real estate available, that real estate might not actually be an appropriate building for a Police Department.
Well, I think that, my understanding is not only did you look at other properties and evaluate the appropriateness of the building, that the value that's being offered as a first, where it was priced for this property is less than the other properties that have been.
Yes. That's correct. All right. So you want to make just a motion?
Sure. So I'll also say that, so if the landlords have this document, they are, they're doing a final review, again, no changes expected, as all of this has been discussed with them and with us pretty extensively. But just holding that point, I do move that we approve, entering into this agreement, approve this contract with two exceptions, that there are no substantive changes or that any changes are reviewed and approved by our attorney, and that we have receipt and validation, verification of the property being, of the property prior to signing the agreement.
Is there a second?
I have one second.
Yes. Commissioner Pravat got that second, Aiden. All right, so Commissioner Brooks, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat?
Aye.
I also vote aye. So that passed, motion passes. And we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Property Standards for Board Discussion. In the lead up to the discussion about this, I want to just make sure we're focusing on this drafted legislation and any changes that we want to make to it so that we can appropriately move forward with this. So I know that Commissioner Colbert, you presented some questions. I'm actually going to ask Attorney Ruff if you want to do an introduction and kind of address anything that might need to change or not. I'm sorry. You have his questions there?
I do. That's what I was looking to.
Okay.
I have, um, this is Al.
Um, let me pull up.
Which I don't think has a question. But what's it on?
Okay, hang on, let me.
I can read them all.
Okay. Should I make?
So the first question I had was regarding Section 6A. It seemed as if the town was taking on the responsibility of re-reviewing, or at least in my interpretation, of re-reviewing applications submitted and approved for county permits. You know, part of the discussion that we had previously, we're issuing permits would be after the county had issued their permit. Are we actually intending to redo or re-review a process that the county has already taken on, or are we looking specifically for town-specific requirements?
So we are not going to redo what the county did. We want to make sure that they have appropriate permits in hand, and that was the reason for doing that. If you remember off in our last discussion, we did talk about making some changes, but we're waiting to see what the others. Unfortunately, when I got down last week, I was in here a couple of days and didn't have a chance to make all those changes tonight, but we certainly will do that and we'll get a revised document to go address as everybody's, and the discussion we had. So my understanding is, with limited staff that we have here, that it was not the town's intention to re-review what the county did, but rather to make sure that we were aware of what's going on in the town, to make sure that we have copies of the county building permits and that our inspector, if they saw something that was amiss, they would be able to take action. That is how I understood it.
I think it's useful in this situation we have with the Springbend Drive sheds, and also Administrator Anderson had an interesting phone call with someone who's doing some building. It sounds like they don't have the right permits and they're somehow under the impression that the town is supposed to inquire them, and it's something we would have caught if they had to come for us for a permit in the first place. So now we have to bring the county in and resolve some of that. So I, you want me to?
My question. Next question I had was regarding Section 6 dot A dot 3. Who or what committee will be responsible for reviewing and approving the permit applications? Is that something that we're going to define in here? Are we going to just name a committee and then move from, how is that going to determine who's getting on for that?
So generally, you're going to ask whoever is most, has the most expertise or most relevant department. So probably all the department heads will see anything that comes through, but, you know, Public Works is going to probably have more substantial comments than any other department on it, although our town administrator has experience in reviewing permits and plans, so he may, you know, have comments. Police probably doesn't usually have much review, but there might be specific circumstances where their review is necessary. So it'll probably be the department heads.
Then my last two questions are kind of related, so I'll just ask them. One, relating to timing of, not getting into the specifics of enforcement, but the timing of, will the date for grandfathered structures be updated pending the date of passage of this ordinance, and are we able to include any type of grace period from enforcement action once this, once this is passed?
Yeah, if you want to put people on notice of a recently adopted legislation, you can say effective January 1st, this will be implied into whatever date you choose. Just trying to think of a couple of months out, if people notice. But you can give grace periods. As far as enforcing it, that's your internal structure. If you would want to give, like a notice by hanger, door hanger, or some kind of a letter that goes out saying, we've recently adopted this ordinance, we find that you have a situation that violates the recently adopted orders, just putting you on notice, effective, whatever date you need to do that.
And I think with regard, if you're talking about this building permit piece, not the property standards, because the property standards piece is functionally kind of just cleaning up what we have to some extent. But the permit piece, it's a lot easier to say to like, commercial property is like, this is, this is what we're doing moving forward from this date, and they can get on board more quickly, whereas residents, it might be a longer period on that.
In terms of the time I implement the permit process?
Yeah, and I think that's, that's an internal, you know, decision to, you know, send this to the commercials, they're professional businesses, they know what they're doing, they can get on board with that quickly. But with regard to residents, you know, it's going to be a, hey, you know, in the next landing, did you know, you know, in the consent context, did you know? We'll do flyers, did you know if you do work in your yard, you're going to need to have a permit and here's how to do it? And then probably for a good year or so, just really using a courtesy card process as people get used to that. This is, we've always had these, or some level of permit requirements, they've just never been enforced. So. I think you have one more question.
No, they were.
Oh, they were the same question, okay.
They're all my questions, thank you.
I know Commissioner Brooks, you didn't have any questions last time we chatted. Did you have anything?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Pravat, did you have any questions?
I don't have questions. I just, you know, just thinking of last time I'd looked at the President's notice before we started enforcing, that we are going to start enforcing this ordinance, you know, it's coming from the county. But I just, I feel like I discussed everything I got it out last session, so.
Yeah, this, really, the way our, the way our ordinance is written now, it's really only the, that, we're going to start enforcing this building permit piece. We've been enforcing property standards for many, many years. So it's not necessarily new property standards, but we are working on making sure everyone has access to all of that. All right. We're going to, this is discussion, I am wanting to let the public tell us what they're thinking, so I will open this up to public comment. If you come up to comment, you're going to have three minutes, you're going to state your name and the street you live on, we're going to listen to you. If you have questions, we'll answer them after we close the public comment period. All right. Seeing no public, go ahead.
Jimber Clay, Old Mulberry Pike. Are you actually voting to annexes today? Because I wonder whether it was a whereas blank and whereas.
It was a draft document.
So, yeah, as I said, this was, is just a discussion. Normally, I would close a special meeting and reopen as a work session so we could have a conversation, because the next three items on, two items on the agenda are something we want the public to be heavily involved in and we want their opinion on, and I'm leaving it regular so that you can share. But seeing no more, no more comments on this topic, we're going to move on to Charter Review. And more than a board discussion, this is really just, I keep leaving this on the agenda as we approach it to give the public a comment, a chance to comment on it. And I'm going to kind of try to give a little context of what the charter is as we go along. The charter is kind of like the town's constitution, I guess, is the way to see it. It decides how our government is structured, it decides how our elections are structured, decides what this board has jurisdiction over, decides what I have jurisdiction over, what our staff has jurisdiction over. It, so it, everything about how the government works and how we're elected and how we sit here is governed by the charter. So, you know, we have the charter online, we have a community engagement portal and the charter is online and it's broken up on there for you. But if you don't want to sit and read this long charter and you just have a comment with how our government is working, how it could work better, what you would like to see differently, just send that to us over info@uppermarlortmd.gov or through our online comment box, which you can find under "How do I?" on our website, or if you go to the Charter, Community Engagement Portal Charter, it's at the top of every page. So we want to hear from you, you know, just very practically, is there anything you would like to improve? Does any staff have anything to say? I know Administrator Clayton, you're starting to get into that. But I'll open that up for public comment now as well.
Thanks. Jimber Clay, Old Mulberry Pike. So although the town charter is linked to from the, from the town's website, it's a reprint in 2021, I believe there have been charter amendments since then.
So we actually updated it in the Community Engagement Portal and all the relevant updates are integrated in the Community Engagement Portal.
Okay. It would be nice if the link from the website actually linked to that version of it.
It's a document.
My other comment is though, because I haven't seen this, I'm not even sure where the Community Engagement Portal is. So in discussions with the previous town administrator, he made a comment that the clause in the charter saying that there were actually penalties for violating the town ordinance and the town charter are not allowed to be in there and therefore have no bearing. And so I think that if you have a town charter- And so I think that if you have a town charter, there actually needs to be some way to enforce it. And so if that's not supposed to be there, then whatever would be the normal way to have an enforcement mechanism needs to be put in.
Is there any other public comment? So one, one of the things that will be happening when we review that will be that, our, oh, you can comment from up here. Our, our town attorney will be reviewing it with us. And I know that, that our previous town clerk and previous town attorney did a kind of run through for all that type of stuff. Between the town attorney and town administrator, they'll probably catch all that little stuff and we'll be dealing with more of the bigger process issues. If there's nothing else on that, I'm going to move on to item E, meeting regulations. Is everyone okay with that? So, you know what, they've been in the last several packets, so we didn't actually put them in this packet. So I guess, Commissioner Lot, you had wanted us to put this on the agenda for discussion. So I'm actually just going to kind of turn it over for, we'll let you kind of say what you think about meetings and then we'll give everyone a chance if they have anything to say and then we can decide what to move forward, so.
Okay, so we're talking about the meeting, our town meetings, correct?
Yeah, all of, well, town meetings and work sessions are all regulated by that. It's been in last couple of packets.
So I guess I want to say, good evening, everyone. I, my thoughts about the meeting regulations is that I think we should give more freedom to the residents to speak, more than three minutes. That's one of the issues. I feel like, I think we have a good system where we can come at the end and, you know, go back to whatever you want to say. But I think we should give them a little more time. We don't have a big meeting, we don't have a lot of, you know, a large attendance. So I think that we should keep our ears open a little bit more to what they have to say. That's my thoughts.
Commissioner Brooks, do you have any thoughts about meeting?
I'd like, you need to re-review the regulations and standards now. I mean, I, I think there's always room for more public engagement. I think we want to do so in a way that, you know, we want to make sure it's still constructive and that we're still able to move forward. I don't know if being time limited in its entirety is, is a solution, maybe expanding it a little bit.
Let's expand it a little bit.
But I think there's, I think there's room for a little bit of flexibility there.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Say we were to change the time, like the, in the meeting regulations, we go from three minutes to four minutes. But then we come to a meeting and there's only one resident who wants to speak. Do we have to follow the meeting regulations, like by the book? Or are we able to say like, well, you know, like today, you know, there's only three people here. So we have the time and the flexibility to allow them to speak more? So we have to follow that if we were to change the time?
Okay, that's exactly what my thought process was.
So, so the meeting regulations, what I'm going to say is that it's like this huge document, right? And there are like, a lot of other things in there that probably need to be cleaned up and dealt with. But it is not the biggest thing we have in front of us right now, right?
It is.
Annexation is more of our other things that are important. So what I'm going to say, the person who is leading the meeting, me, has the ability to suspend the rules under certain circumstances and allow, you know, like in a work session, I allow public comment. That's not actually allowed in our regulations. I just suspend the rules every work session and allow people to give us comment at the end. So I can allow longer comments. There's a balance, right, between, you know, we have had this room with fifteen, twenty people in it. That times five minutes is a lot more time than that times three minutes.
That's been a long time ago, though.
Correct, but we are annexing, right? So I'm sort of hesitant to change the actual rules, right? Because it, it really limits what we can do when we do have a larger crowd. And I'm also, it's, it's not that we can't allow people to talk for a longer period of time. Most people can get kind of their point across in that time. If someone is struggling to get their point across, I will often tell them that they're at their time and they kind of wrap up their comments there. I'm not, I'm not gabbling people to be quiet.
No, but, no, but when we, like she said, and I brought up, when we have very few people, we don't change the rules. We don't say, well, okay, since we don't have a larger crowd, I can understand if you want to keep it, I do. Because it keeps order to a certain degree. But when we do have one or two people here, and that's, since I've been on the board, that's what I've seen. And I haven't seen a full house with fifteen, twenty people, only maybe one time when we had the, when we're talking about the horses and stuff like that. So my thought process is to give people a little bit more time to talk because we're here to serve them. So we need to know what they're thinking. And this is the time where we all collectively can hear what the thought process is. But yes, you can suspend it and manipulate it, but we haven't done that.
What if we went with an implementation situation rather than actually bringing the meeting regulations up and spending our time on them? When we should do other things where, I'm going to set the timer for three minutes. I'm going to kind of give people that three minute, just three minutes are up and I'll let it run for another minute. And then now you need to, now it's time to sit down. That gives them that warning that they've got to, yeah, concise. And if people want to have a longer conversation, I think, I think the thing that we really need to communicate is that this is actually like a board of directors for a company, right? We're a municipality, but we're a board of directors and we're having a meeting and the public is observing and they're providing us with their input. And we need to be responsible to everyone we're representing, all seven hundred people, by being efficient and democratic in our process. And that's not to say we don't, we, we want people to come and share their comments. But we want to have conversations about things in a different forum, a forum that isn't observe your, your board approving legislation and making their decisions. And so that's, I, I didn't actually do community conversations over the summer because it was so dang hot. But I would like to get them started back at, up again in the fall and we can be out. I was thinking we could do some on the move, we could have tables at some and we can be out so people can have that conversation with us. They're always welcome to use our virtual comment box, emailing info@uppermarlboroMD.gov. You can call town hall, but we don't take public comment, our staff doesn't take public comment directly because there's too much opportunity for things to get lost in translation. So I feel like there's, there's good opportunities for people to participate, but it's, it's a matter of what the appropriate forum is.
Okay, I have another question. I understand not wanting to have conversations while we're here and let people, you know, are bringing us their concerns, questions, whatever. But regarding like the rules, if somebody is explaining something, as you guys know, I write everything down. Sometimes I don't understand and I want to ask a follow-up question, like, wait, wait, are you talking about, you know, what is the regu, rules, regulations for that?
Yeah, so we are advised not to have a conversation back and forth. There's, A, there's the fact that we are currently a board of directors, sitting as the board in our official capacities. And we don't want to give out wrong information, right? We don't want to, we don't want to have a conversation with a resident who is maybe providing information that isn't accurate to what is happening. And then we get engaged in a side conversation and people are confused. I've definitely seen that happen at meetings in the past when I was a resident and walked away very confused. So I think if we have questions about what a resident has said, it will be best to kind of keep them aside. And then when I sort of do that answer and explanation, if you, you know, maybe we can add, if I can figure out a way to add something, but it's probably better if we talk offline and then come back cohesively. Sometimes I don't have an answer and it's a question that I think people need to know, so I'll come back and ask.
But I don't think that, yeah, I don't think it was about that. I think she's trying to say, like, sometimes a resident is trying to get a point across and we don't really understand because we don't have the details. So we don't have the opportunity, kind of shut them down because we don't have the opportunity to kind of dig in and say, well, what are you talking about? I, I just want to be clear. You don't have to give, we don't necessarily have to answer them right now because you may have to say, okay, now I understand and I'll get back to you. You know, but I don't think we have had that interaction with them like that.
Yeah, and I think that's also just not an interaction that's meant for a board of directors meeting. It's a, we need, we need to have this, you know, we're not sure we understand what you're talking about. We're going to put you with a staff member who's going to follow up with you so that they can answer your question. Because a lot of times the questions that are coming up here are really stuff that staff handles on a regular basis. We did have a situation where the, the whole public comment was revolving around something that we were actively dealing with in the office. And, you know, just the way the roles are, you guys don't always have that information in real time. It can make it difficult and so it's better for us to have, you know, either a closed session if it's necessary or a one-on-one conversation to clarify things. So we don't let things that, you know, there's personnel stuff that can't be said here or puts us in legal, like a legal risk.
Right, no, we're not talking about questions like that, we're talking about somebody bringing something. The other thing, the other part of that is, you know, we, like I said, you can always say, you know, I'll get back to you or whatever. But at least they're all, you know, everything is heard, everybody heard it. And the person feels like, you know, they were heard. And I think that we don't have a forum for that. Because if we're only sitting here as the board of directors, you know, and they are sitting here watching, I mean, they, we need their participation so that we can bring more people in and they can get involved in things. I think so, it's a, it's a fine balance that we have to, you know, figure out.
Yeah, and I think that's why we need to have, we need to get those other forums going so they have that place where that's kind of appropriate. Because if you think about it, if we have the public just kind of participating in our deliberations, the ones who come to this meeting, we're doing a disservice to the other six hundred and ninety residents who aren't in this room.
But what if they have the same question? And you know, sometimes people are afraid to ask the question.
And that's fine, and that's fine. And they're going to come up, they're going to ask it, I do not have a pen on me today, but I am, I will go back and write this all down. You know I write this down. Staff can attest that the next, I'm good. Staff can attest that the following day, following a meeting, we actually ha, I go into each of their offices that is relevant and we have a conversation about the public comment and how we can address anything that's come up. They do sometimes reach out to someone if that's necessary. So I think there's what we're doing here and the, the little details of how, how we get here with this packet in front of us. And I just think it's a different forum situation. I don't know if our staff has any thoughts on any of this. How you've seen, have you seen meetings run elsewhere, et cetera? But you don't, sorry.
Question I have, I'm sorry, no. Question on that, are you basically asking if I were to bring an issue?
And you didn't quite understand what I was getting at. You want, you want to be able to say, can you please clarify that, is that what you're, so that's what you're asking? You're not asking to really engage, you're just asking to be able to ask. Can you clarify because I, I don't, I didn't quite understand what you meant. Yeah, or needing more detail. It's not that I'm, it's not that I'm filling my guts, I'm listening to you. I want to hear you because this is your time or your opportunity to speak. So it's not about me, it's about me hearing and all of us collectively hearing. Because that's why they came to the meeting, because they want to talk to all of us. And they want all of us to hear the same thing at the same time. So if they have a few more minutes, not, you know, I'm saying, not if we have fifteen or twenty people, but if we have two, three people, you know, we need to hear exactly what they have to say. And no, we don't have, like I said before, we don't have to give them an answer right now because, like you said, some stuff has to be streamlined through staff, totally get that. But we all need to understand what, what they want to convey.
I think asking for more clarification, that makes sense. I'm concerned that if we asked for more detail, like if we asked for more detail at the last meeting, I could have had to stop the comment because it could have gone into an arena that would put the town in a legal risk. So I think if we need more detail from someone, we're going to have to go up to them after the meeting. To have to say, you know, I want to talk to you after the meeting.
Right, we did that, but I, I think, since you brought that up, I think that was a lack of understanding and they were trying to understand. And the conversation after the meeting helped them get to that point.
They and I were having conversations because it was about something that they couldn't go into detail and I couldn't go into detail in the meeting. We were talking around something that we could not provide detail in a public setting and so.
Are you, you talking about the same thing? The, 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 um, the ticket things, I mean?
Yeah, but there was more to it than that.
Right, 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 right.
So.
Because they came to me, so yeah, I do understand, but, and that's, that part wasn't brought up in the meeting, but they wanted to share that they weren't clear on the regulations. That's basically what she was trying to convey. She didn't go into all the little nitty-gritty.
Right, but we don't want to push the public into things that shouldn't be. That's all I'm saying.
That wasn't, everything is not a legal thing. She wanted to understand the regulations and why she wasn't made aware of that.
Heard that.
Right, and I think that was the gist of what she was trying to say. I didn't know, I didn't provide this information and that's it.
Yeah, I just, I want to get the legal kind of, because I'm trying to protect us legally and if I'm not doing the right thing, that's just.
My experience is sometimes residents come up and they want to ask a question about something that could be a personnel issue that is not appropriate for discussion in public.
No, that's clear, that's clear.
Well, I'm just saying, that's kind of one, that's clear, I suppose, right? That you want to hear them, hear what they say, and then you, you will research it and get back to them.
If it's a personnel thing, then they need to talk to the mayor. But we don't even discuss personnel stuff.
And there are some things that are going to be a quick question that is a quick answer. And I think that the mayor does handle that after everybody asks questions and things that she can do. But there's just going to be times when you may not be aware, any of you may not be aware, that an issue has been worked on in Public Works or has been being worked on by the, the town administrator or somebody like that. And it will require you, because you don't want to give them a happy answer, right? It will require you to go back and do a little bit of research. It's not that you don't want to answer them, it's not that you want to put them off. It's just a matter of, we want to give them a full and complete response. And so those are things to, how does somebody get up here and not be clear about their point and to ask for clarification?
So, so, right, that's not, that's not the issue. I don't think that everything puts us in a, in this thing where it's going to be a legal thing. If someone gets up and says, hey, I got this, I don't understand it and I'm trying to get clarification, it's not going to put us in a, in anything legal to answer the question and have a sidebar, let them say what they have to say and say, we're going to have to address it after the meeting. And then that's what happens. But I don't feel like everything is a legal, a legal thing. Some things are, definitely personnel stuff, but some things are not.
But Kirowe, I feel like we're going down this rabbit hole. My question is really, like, there have been scenarios where somebody says blue and I hear glue and I'm writing it down and I'm like, oh, and you've been like, no, no, we can't engage with the public. And I'm like, I'm just, you know, like, I'm trying to understand fully if I even heard correctly. And that's what I'm questioning is like, are we allowed to do that? When somebody's up here speaking and maybe we didn't hear a word, a whole thing, or we think we might have misheard, we need to, you know, ask.
So let's, let's try and do this and so we can keep things focused, which is if you are, if we're listening to the public and you can't understand what they're saying, just as a commissioner, just stick your hand up like this. And when they're, I want to let them finish talking, like I don't want to interrupt what they're saying. Like, I don't want to interrupt what they're saying.
I agree.
So when they're done talking, I will turn to you and ask you. And then just because the, the public isn't actually supposed to engage with any one individual, they're not supposed to get up here and say, Commissioner La, I have a question for you. But that's not, that's not what they're thinking. So, so I'm, that's why I kind of take it all and put it back and forth. So we'll go through that process to keep it under that system. Thank you.
And maybe another thing to kind of, uh, touch on the earlier point. Maybe it's worth at the beginning of a general or of a public comments section, section, or, uh, any of the business items, there's just a boilerplate statement that says, you know, if there are, if there are comments or questions about a particular, if there are personality issues or whatever, whatever the legal landmines might be, if this is, if this is what your comment is about, we'll have that discussion after the meeting. Please keep it to, you know, the, the point of whatever you're here to discuss today. If there are more, you know, more detail that need to go, that goes into that arena, we can have a separate discussion after the meeting. Level setting the comment section in that way allows people to frame their comment not around a specific person, issue, you know, whatever it may be. But allows it to be general enough for us to know what's going on or at least to have an idea of what's going on. And then point it to whoever, whichever staff member is handling that at the time if that is case. But just, just an opportunity so that people can at least, you know, share what the issue is so that we're all, that we're all hearing it. But then also knowing that it's being taken care of in whatever manner. So it's not, so it doesn't seem as if it's not being taken into consideration.
Right. They're not being heard of. You're right.
So maybe just, like I said, just a.
I, I'll test it out tonight. Commissioner Brooks, do you have anything?
No, I understand what everyone is saying. It's just, you just have to remember, we have to have order. But I understand, you know, you don't understand a court, a comment someone's making. I understand that, you know, that happens all the time. But we have to remain, remember to keep order.
Yeah. Um, does staff have any other comments on meeting regulations? I'm gonna open it for public comment on meeting regulations. And then we'll move on to administrative updates.
I love her mic. So back when I was a town commissioner, we didn't have these meeting regulations. Waned it and we didn't have a larger crowd, so, you know, but it was, part of the goal was, um, you know, be informed if you're, especially if you're gonna make a vote. You know, you can't tell them, hey, we'll talk to you after the meeting, after we voted on this thing. That, that doesn't make sense. And so if someone comes in with jargon or, you know, something that just the way they stated it didn't make sense to you, I think those are the times when to make an informed vote, you would want to ask for verification. But I think keeping it short is still good because there are some people who can just throw an arm in the air forever and actually never get to a point. But I think the bigger problem of the three minutes is actually, you only get to come up once. So if you come up, you know, you state your case really quick, go back and sit down, then someone else comes up and gives something that you know to be factually incorrect, you have no opportunity to then counter that and, and, you know, state, you know, either proof or why you think that's incorrect. And I know that there was a time when Charles had made a question, um, about a vote that was coming up and he was given information that was incorrect until he voted based on incorrect information. So it would be nice to have some way to be able to, you know, counter that. Thank you.
General comments, that's another opportunity for people to get up and speak, right?
Right. But I also, I don't think it's appropriate to turn our board of directors meeting into a debate between residents either. So I think that, that, everyone's gotta make their point. And, yeah. All right. Um, no one has their hand raised online. So I'm actually gonna move us on to administrative updates. And I don't think, yeah, we don't have any on there. So I'm gonna ask the department heads, chief, we'll start with you since you are at your conference. Do you have any administrative updates for us?
No, I do not.
Director Bond. Administrator Anderson, welcome. Brian Brooks, did I understand some of the, okay. All right, then, um, we will move on to public comment. This is for items not necessarily on the immediate agenda. Just so everyone understands, these are general public comments. You know, I usually let things fly like, we're happy we have a new town administrator, welcome. But, um, you know, we, we don't specifically address any, any individual. We don't address their performance specifically. That's something you guys have to talk to, preferably maybe because the board has chosen me to manage staff about, um, if you come up, state your name, state the street you live on. We're gonna listen to you. We're gonna collect all of those comments as you talk. I'm actually going to be typing them, or sealed Commissioner Colbert's pen today, so that we can answer your questions. If we can't answer them, we will get back to you. Did I get everything?
Yes, you did.
Okay. So, um, it looks like we have an online comment first. Brian Callicott.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, much better.
Awesome. Thank you. I try. Um, so just one, or two things. One thing is I can't seem to get the PDF links to work. They might have worked earlier, but right now they aren't. And like for the agenda, it might just be me, but I tried on my phone and my computer. So if someone could check, that would be awesome. And if there is a problem, fix it and maybe let me know. Because man, the PDF is so much better to me for attending meetings, printing, et cetera, than HTML. And the second thing I have is, so I had my trash not picked up about a week ago. You know, trash pickup, um, pretty basic service. So I just put it in to info@uppermarlboro.gov and I didn't get a response. I mean, period. So I'm like, am I doing something wrong? Should I have called? Should I now be using, the new website just came up and there's a service request? I mean, what do you do with info and what should the expectations be? Are they like a help desk where people definitely get a response? Or is it just sort of go out there and you don't know if someone ever read it or not? I, I'm interested in that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment in the room?
Joe Rock, I'm Oliver Pike. Wanted to remind people, we're still doing board games every other Wednesday, six to nine down hall. Next will be next Wednesday. Also, if anyone's interested, the library is having a stop-the-lead training tomorrow. I think it's five to six p.m.
Anyone else? All right. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and answer questions. One, I'm not sure about the PDF links. They have been working. But I do know that I have frequently, when I am working remotely, called staff and said, this link isn't working and you've got to get it back up. And they're like, it, it, it is working. And when I go on a different device, it works. So sometimes it is actually your computer that needs an update, but we will check on that.
I know that Nick Colbert's having some server issues earlier, actually.
Okay. So there are server issues with the host, so.
I've been looking for that tomorrow or this month.
So it, um, if the host server is down, that would put them down. But sometimes check to update your computer, I have learned also. Um, as far as info, info, it does go to our administrative assistant. It sounds like you sent the email while our administrative assistant was on vacation and we did not have a town administrator at the time to back that up, which means that your email didn't have someone on the other end of it immediately. And the email doesn't typically always have that immediate response. If your trash doesn't get picked up, please call. It is the fastest way to get your trash picked up. It does happen that our trash service doesn't, misses a house. When you call and let someone know at town hall, it gets picked up very, very quickly. I've watched it happen where I hear the call coming in as I'm leaving town hall. And by the time I get to my house and get in the car, less than ten minutes later, I can see the guys picking it up. So, um, definitely, please call for any missed trash pickups. Right. So we will move on to preliminary approval of our next meeting agenda, which is gonna be our voting so we can introduce the property standards. We can allow public, any public input on charter review. Again, um, we'll take meeting regulations off because we've decided to handle that internally. Does anyone, we probably will, might start to talk about, no, we probably won't be ready with the annexation stuff. Codification, will codification be?
So I got another on communication from.
Okay. It's all like MuniCode anyway.
Anyway, they asked the same question. They said they were not gonna be able to get documents to as far as the S. Their recommendation at this point is don't property standards. And as soon as property standards is done, send it to them, they will turn it around and then adopt.
Okay. So, yeah, because property standards would theoretically be a, voted on in October, twenty days into November, and so they can maybe get us a draft for November's meeting.
Correct. That's how.
All right. I do want to mention while we're here, which this isn't for the next meeting, but the following meeting, and I kind of want to talk it up a little, is that we are gonna have MNC PPC presenting to us at the first work session of October. They are finalizing the trail feasibility study. And they're gonna be wanting public engagement with that. So we hope you will come out to that meeting. And, uh, first, or the second Tuesday in October is the eighth of October. And we'll be starting at seven. Anything else? Do we want to pop anything else onto the agenda? Typically, and I meant to say this before, typically, we don't vote on an item without discussing it at a work session first. And we haven't voted on any item without discussing it at multiple work sessions and meetings in many months. So there's always lots of chance to tell us what you think about what we're up to. All right. So we'll move forward with that for the end of the month. Is there a motion to adjourn? All, right, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. I told you.